Work session of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. This is a work session and all work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. And tonight, we have one topic on our work session, and that is the Tri-City Internship and Leadership Program. And we'd like to welcome Anne Marie Ward, who is here to speak with us about this program. And we invite you to introduce yourself and your other speaker and tell us a little bit about you and then the program.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Miles, members of the council. My name is Anne Marie Ward. I sit with the board as just a speaker and associate member. And this evening, we were a little convoluted on schedule, and Gina is here with us, who is not only a member of the board, but one of the founding members of the board. And so I'm going to defer to her this evening. Sorry, it's been a long day. There's a packet in front of you that'll have several different articles in it that go along with the group, and that'll be a great reference. You can photocopy off of that as you share it later on down the road, but I'm going to let Gina talk to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Miles and members of the board. My name is Gina Covert, and I am currently by day the Career and Technical Education Director for Colorado River Union High School District. And it was in that role that I had the opportunity to meet Wahid Ziri, a doctor in the Bullhead City area. As a result of that chance meeting and a conversation we had one day, we realized that we had an interest that was compatible with each other, and that was, what are we doing with our youth and how are we preparing them for the future? He shared with me a story that I see on a regular basis as a CTE director. We are preparing children in the classroom every day for hopefully a great transition from school to work. And oftentimes, I go to meetings and I hear, "We don't do vocational education anymore. We don't teach job skills anymore." And I'm like, "But I do. That's my job. Every day, I promise we're doing it." And so I have a favorite little cartoon, and it's the one with Charlie Brown and the teacher speaking, and it goes wah-wah-wah-wah, right? Okay? And that's kind of what we feel like sometimes in the classroom. We are teaching these learning objectives every day, but most of our children do not have the opportunity to put it into play. So it doesn't really have that relevance that they're seeking, and through an internship program, we can make what they're learning more relevant. Dr. Wahid has two beautiful children, and both of them are kind of following in his footsteps. They're going into the medical profession. And in one particular case, his daughter got all the way finished with her degree in the medical field that she was choosing to go into, and within the first three months of working on the job, she called dad and said, "This is so wrong. I cannot do this every day. This is not me. I don't like this, this, and this, and this. I should have done something like this, this, or this, or this." And he was opening up his wallet again so that she could go back to school and get the right degree in the same field, the medical field, but a little different job. As a Career and Technical Education Director, I will maybe possibly prepare a student for a business program, or a construction trades program, or the medical field, a certified nursing assistant. It is not that uncommon for that certified nursing assistant, after her first few practicums, to come to my office and say, "Mrs. Covert, I don't like patients, okay? But I really do want to do something in the medical field." And that's when I'm looking at them, saying, "Well, how about billing and coding? Back of the house, work with a few adults, do the numbers, you know? How about that?" If we find out early enough in their career, we save mom and dad a ton of money. We save student a lot of heartache, you know, and soul searching. And so with this internship program, we provide them with that additional opportunity. However, in my years of being a CTE director, I've had a really hard time getting businesses to open their doors. And in the case of Tri-State Youth Internship and Leadership, we're asking them to open their doors with value added. Okay? That value added is I'm asking them to remember the days when I was a kid and I got my first internship, okay? And my first internship paid me $1.50 an hour. And when the truck pulled in from the farm with all of the berries in the truck, un-air-conditioned, the first thing we did was go like this and swipe off all the mold off the top of the berries. Okay? Never ate a berry out of a food market without washing it again, right? Okay? I stood in a chiller all day long, washed berries, recupped them, and a case of strawberries became a case of strawberries. You know, a cup of cherries became a case of cherries. And that was my first job. I never worked as a berry digger, a babysitter, a cow milker, a tractor driver, or a potato picker without getting paid. However, in recent generation in the United States, and we are one of the only countries, we offer internships and expect our children to work for free. What is the overall consequence for that? They have zero money management skills. They do not value the dollar, and sometimes they don't even value the work that they've done. So through Tri-State Internship and Leadership, we are asking individuals in the community to open their doors, provide a value-added, relevant internship that is paid for six weeks during the summer. We're asking that 16- to 25-year-olds be considered for those positions, and those internship doors that are open, we're asking you to consider yourself a mentor, a mentor for our future leaders, our future employees, and hopefully, our future employees of the Tri-State area. We need to grow our own. We want them to come home. I have five children, all adults. I have six grandchildren. Only one came home after college. I never in a million years imagined that I would have Sunday dinners with one child and one grandchild and a new in-law. I expected a big house full of kids and a big house full of grandkids, and they all found jobs elsewhere, and they all found a lifestyle that they wanted to live that is wonderful. I'm very proud of all of them, but I miss them. And every single one of them could have a job in our community, because I have watched. There are openings in their fields. So every time there's that opening, I say, "Come home." But they're happy where they are, and they haven't come home. I've recently had conversations with our city council in Bullhead. We have many job openings that are going unfilled. The carpentry field and the construction field is desperate for workers, and we have classrooms that are preparing kids for those fields. And so we're hoping that we can expand that program into our tri-city areas. Last year in Bullhead, we started out hoping for 10 internships. We received 30 offers. We placed 25. We currently have 40 possible openings in the Bullhead City area. At this time, we're looking at possibly 10 in Kingman and 10 in Lake Havasu as well. Our Laughlin Community and Needles Community has reached out to us and asked us, "Will you take our kids as well?" So we have been advertising in all schools in the area for those internship openings. So I would like Mrs. Ward to come forward. I would like her to talk to you about the second component of our program, and that is the Youth Leadership Program.
Wonderful. Thank you. So yeah, as you noticed, the program has two words, is the internship and leadership. And one of the pieces that we noticed was missing was, first of all, we are exporting, our highest export in our rural communities is our intellectual capital and the way of our youth. And so we have the retention part, but what they also desperately need are those leadership fundamentals, because we eventually want them to sit where you're sitting, and then to go on to the state level, hopefully the federal level, and maybe someday say that Mr. or Mrs. President is one of our own. So those fundamentals, we want to begin, and we give them that training before they ever hit their internship, starting with putting your phone away, dressing appropriately for work, showing up early and leaving late. And so those basic skills of this is where your leadership begins, is the way that you simply present yourself, into the communication skills, collaborating with fellow workers, those pieces, so that when they show up to the workplace, they're not only a valued member, but they set the stage for the people coming in behind them. The program was so successful that last year, six of our interns were hired where they worked. That's an incredible step in the first year. We would love to see more businesses and more varied businesses. As Gina mentioned, Dr. Ziri is a doctor, so we have a plethora of opportunities in the medical field, not as many in other areas. I know that there's some other opportunities that were mentioned, I think, by members of the council already, and we would like to see that become a component. Do you want me to dive into the packet? Okay. So in the packet, if you'll just glance at your first page with me, those are some deadlines. So there's some components, as Gina mentioned, age 16 to 25 is what we're looking for. We do have a board member that is with Mojave Community College, and so she helps source a lot of our college students, and we have already talked to the school board in Kingman, who are excited. And so the students will have the opportunity to apply, and not necessarily students, young adults will have the opportunity to apply. And as you can see on your first page there, that application will open at the end of February and close at the end of March. There was a brief orientation, I guess we could call it an orientation and open house to the public. I know Mayor Miles was there, Vice Mayor Lindonfelder was there, trying to encourage our businesses to come aboard, and we had a great response from that. So in your packet, on the third page in, first page is just an intro there, is a letter of intent. If you know of businesses in the community, if you own a business that can get involved and say, "I will take on an intern," we are asking that they receive 120 hours of work for the six weeks. It's June 1st to July 15th. How much an hour?
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage, minimum wage, although some businesses have chosen to pay more, which the students are happy to take that. And so that letter of intent, we have some businesses taking one, two interns, and so that is for them. If you know them, please push that out, maybe on your social media or in person. That next page in your packet is what they are going to fill in.
This is the mentor description of the opportunity the student will have.
Great. And then, so they'll fill that out. And then the associate member application. So this associate member is a wonderful opportunity for the community to get involved. That's where I got involved. Dr. Ziri met me. I actually have a doctorate in leadership, and he said, "Oh, perfect. You can help us write some curriculum." They don't actually need me. They have Gina, who's already an expert. But it's a great way for us to get involved and say, "I can speak about the program. I can get involved helping with the mentors, whatever it may be. If you just want to be a part of this and be a voice for it, please become an associate member. It's $100 a year. Great opportunity to give back." And then those last two pages is the application for the student. So I'll hand it to Gina now.
So again, we're asking for 120 hours of internship time. The mentor can exceed that. The reason the 120 hours is so significant is in the world of the high school student, if they do 120 hours in an internship program, it can actually equate to some CTE credits, elective credits towards graduation. All of the boards in our area have approved that through the guidance of Arizona Department of Ed. So the program that we will use with those students who are participating and want the credit transfer to their high school environment, we have a program which includes a time and effort time card. Not only do they keep track of their time, but they keep track of a journal, what skills they obtained, what standard that applied to. So they do that type of paperwork. They turn the paperwork in, and between their evaluation from their mentor, their paperwork and their time, they can get half a credit for those 120 hours. Do you have any questions of me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you for the presentation. I saw you both speak down in Bullhead at the Lunch and Learn, and I was very impressed. So thank you for coming to speak with the council, and hopefully, there's a lot of people watching. You mentioned diversifying from the healthcare services industry into some of the other industries, and I was wondering if you guys had reached out to the Kingman and Manufacturing Association yet?
We have had conversations with a couple of them, and then we also have a presentation to the Builders Association that's on our schedule as well.
I'd invite you, I try to make it to as many of their monthly meetings as I can, just to let you know that KAMA has, their next regular membership meeting is on the 18th of this month from 1:00 to 2:30. And usually, they'll go around the whole room, and everybody will introduce themselves, and you'll have an opportunity to talk. I think that'd be a great opportunity. I think I'm going to be there, and I'd be, you know, able to introduce you guys to as many people as you want, but I think the opportunity's out there. You could really explode this program in Kingman, because right now, we have 70 businesses. They employ over 2,600 people, over $100 million payroll every single year, and so, I mean, there you go, you know? Great opportunities to get into manufacturing, transportation, distribution, logistics, even aviation. That's exciting, so hopefully, if you guys can send somebody up.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. I know I have some welding students that have been eyeballing that area.
Good.
So, and I believe Carol Gunnerson has some as well, so.
Yeah. I absolutely agree with you, though. I mean, you have the young people that have to move away for opportunities, and a lot of times, they don't come back. I graduated high school here, and I had to move away for opportunity, and I was one of the lucky ones that was a boomeranger, and I came back to my town, right? But it doesn't happen a lot.
Right.
So if we can keep them here, that'd be great.
Yeah, and we've evolved a lot in the job market, and our post-secondary education is unfolding in, you know, some very creative ways in order to fill those mass retirement positions that are opening up. And so hopefully, we're preparing children with enough skill set that they can be mentored with the right individual to fill those very large boots or shoes.
My only other question would be for Manager Foggan, is if, since we're in the budgeting process now, is there any opportunity to maybe take on one, two, three, or four of the interns next year?
Well, I don't think it'll be a big impact to the budget, and the departments will be invited to look at their operations to see where that would fit.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
I see Carol Gunnerson here, and thank you. And I know that you attend those KAMA meetings routinely and also are very instrumental in working with them to create the Manufacturing Day here in Kingman. Truly appreciate it. So it looks to me like all the network is in place to really springboard this program for our students. My question is regarding the interview process. If you have applications from the students and you've got opportunities from the employers, who is meshing those together? Do the employers interview the students, or?
It depends on the mentor's choice. Last year, we had some mentors that said, "No interview required. Just make sure that they've got the skill set we need."
Okay.
And then in other cases, they asked our associate membership to do the interview because they genuinely needed to be busy doing their offices. A lot of our medical professionals left it to the associate membership. And then in a couple of cases, there was a couple of businesses that said, "We would like to interview. Could you give us three students?" And we would give them three students for the interview panel, and we would go through the applications first, make three recommendations, and they interviewed. So it really depended on what they put in their description and their needs from us.
Well, that flexibility makes it very nice for the employers, truly. Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments?
Anne Marie, I'd have one more question. And I'm not sure if you can answer it for me, but there's a facility down in Bullhead called The Legacy. Have they been participating?
Yes. What we're trying to do right now in the Bullhead City area is that The Legacy will take children as early as 16.
Right.
And so what we do is, if they have not ever done an opportunity like this, and they're in the medical field, we ask them to do Legacy first as their first opportunity, because it's a job shadow.
Right.
So they get to watch, but they don't really get to touch.
Right.
Then we continue with them, trying to get them started in their MEA certificate or their CNA certificate, and then the following year, we try to place them in the internship.
Got it. And in Kingman, have you guys approached the Lindonfelder Center or the Gardens?
I have not. You have.
Okay. Just curious, because I was going to mention.
We haven't heard back from them, but a lot of times, they have to go to their boards or higher-ups than they make their decision.
Okay. Appreciate it.
And I have one more question.
Okay.
I take it you're probably going to get a lot of applications from students, because paid internships are very attractive. And I did want to mention, my first internship was really a co-op program in junior, my junior year in high school. That's when I learned I didn't want to be a dental assistant.
Right.
I was like, "Oh, there's so much blood."
Yeah. I had one of my children, top of his class, graduate, and he came home the next day and told me, "Yeah, I'm never doing that again," and he hasn't. And he was in the medical field. He says, "I had no," and he's doing something completely different now.
Yeah. I had all those caught chances, you know? I was a candy striper, but then when I got in the office and I thought, "I just don't think I like all this," so anyway, took a different path. They're very helpful. They're so important. I have a question, though, about the applications. Given that you have all of these applications, a lot of them will match and some won't. Do you work with the Arizona At Work system for students that might qualify for those programs, since they can pay for job skill training with employers?
We have had preliminary conversations with Arizona At Work on how we might start that referral process with them. So if there is a student that, you know, is at risk, hard to place, that kind of thing, and we don't have the perfect fit for them, then we will work directly with Arizona At Work for those referrals.
Because maybe they're really motivated, but they just don't have the skills.
Exactly.
So that would be a really good partnership. Excellent. Okay. Anything else? We really appreciate you being here. This is a great opportunity for the city, as well as all of our businesses, because often, people don't think about all the jobs that are in government and all types of jobs that require every kind of skill just about that you've got on the table. So it's an exciting thing, and I really appreciate what all of you are putting into this program. It's great.
We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and we hope you have a wonderful month. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That concludes our work session topic, and so I will adjourn this meeting and call for the regular meeting in 10 minutes at 6 o'clock. call for the regular meeting in 10 minutes at six o'clock. Annie, you want to either invite the man or close the door? Oh, okay. I'm going by our city clock. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 at six o'clock PM. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingenvelter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is excused. Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Waite.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation, uh, Annie, is this our backup? Okay, we're very fortunate. We have Jesse Wilcox from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints who will give our invocation. Please stand for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered here this evening as a city council. We're grateful for the families and individuals in this community. We're so grateful for the chance and opportunity that we have to go over a different selected items. We pray that thy Spirit will be with us this evening. We pray for the families and individuals in this community that they will be able to be uplifted and be able to overcome the challenges that they face each and every day. Grateful for the leaders that we have and that are here at this time. Grateful for the rain and moisture that has fallen and ask thou would continue to bless the area with the rain and moisture that we need. We are so grateful unto thee, Father, for thy love, thy hand that has been given and shown to us in many ways. And thus we pray for and give thee thanks in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, uh, our first order of business, well, before I, we go into that, I'll read my blurb, which is the council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. So our first order of business is to make a recognition and a proclamation regarding women making history. I know we have a number of individuals here tonight, so I'm going to read this proclamation and then invite you up to give this to you and to ask the council to come down and we can all get some photos as we give this proclamation. But the proclamation is, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background helped found the nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of our nation's life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working in and outside the home, and whereas American women served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, not only to secure their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor union movement, and the modern civil rights movement. Now therefore, I, Jen Miles, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of March to be designated as Women's History Month and specifically designate Sunday, March 1st, 2020, as Women Making History Day, and in doing so, urge all citizens to join me in observing this month by recognizing the important roles women have played in the growth of our nation, our state, and our city. In witness thereto, I have set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Kingman, done at the City of Kingman, Arizona, on the fourth day of February 2020. Uh, is there anyone from the group that would like to say a few words? Or Betsy Parker, would you like to, maybe just an invitation to your event?
So I have the teacher voice. I will need to use the microphone. Thank you very much, council.
Yes, and, and address the council.
I doubt. Um, thank you so much for recognizing us tonight. Um, I'm sure you know Mayor Miles was one of our winners and we are in our 36th year, 36th year, and we just really work hard to recognize women in Kingman in the various things that they do, various categories, and we invite you all to our presentation at the museum on March 1st. We will start at 2:00 PM and it will be very exciting for you to recognize the winners and join us. We always have a really good turnout and we're very appreciative that the City of Kingman has made this proclamation for us today.
Thank you so much. Okay.
So I think we have six here.
Okay.
We're missing Crystal Burge from our committee, but everyone else.
And councils, councillors, if you'd like to join me?
Shoot. Yes.
We didn't even make a controversial, so you'd be interested. Thank you. We'll give them just a moment. Okay, our next order of business is a call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Uh, do we have anyone sign up? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Uh, well, with, uh, no one commenting tonight, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there any item that the council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item C, please.
Item C. Okay. Any other item? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, and D.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Motion is second to approve consent agendas, items A, B, and D. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, award of bid for Eighth Street Underpass Drainage and Roadway Improvements, Engineering 16-0021. The city received an Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs State Emergency Council grant to construct drainage and roadway improvements at the Eighth Street Railroad Underpass. Staff issued a request for bid on December 4th, 2019, and received a total of five bids. The bids were publicly opened on January 21st, 2020. The apparent low bidder was Kenny Construction LLC, who submitted a bid in the amount of $479,858. The engineer's estimate for this project was $410,000. The State Emergency Council grant is for $450,000 with 25% match. The low bid is $29,858 over the grant limit. Staff has verified the low bid amount and the contractor's license status and recommends council approve, award a construction contract to Kenny Construction LLC to complete improvement for the Eighth Street Underpass Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $479,858 to authorize the use of $29,858 from the Stormwater Fund and authorize the mayor to sign all project-related documents on behalf of the city. Counselor Staley.
Um, yes, I, uh, probably my question is for you, Mr. Henry. Um, Kenny Construction, is that a local company?
Uh, no, ma'am. They are out of Flagstaff area.
Out of Flagstaff?
Yes.
I looked at the bids and I didn't really recognize any of the names and I'm wondering if we got any local bids on this project?
Um, Trisuns is from Lake Havasu.
From Lake Havasu, but not from Kingman.
Yeah. Technology Construction is in Prescott. Rumel is in the Phoenix area. I don't recall offhand where Standard Construction Company is from, but they're not from Kingman.
No, so no one from, um, Kingman bid this project then? Is that right?
No, not as a general.
Okay. And then is that because, uh, I mean, sometimes I know that this happens because we don't have a company that provides these services. Um, is that the reason here? Or do you know why we didn't receive any local bids? The reason why I ask is because the citizens, and that's what I know we hear a lot, is why aren't, why aren't we hiring local companies, keeping the money local? And I need to have, you know, an answer for that.
Yes. Um, and it's certainly a valid question. And, uh, there were some local contractors who picked up plans.
Okay.
But they did not submit bids. I did not attempt to ask them. This was, uh, according to the Arizona DEMA, Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, they required this to be a low bid project.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that was part of their requirement of the grant. So we advertised it accordance with, uh, Title 34 Arizona state law, and the five bids that we have are the ones that we received.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, I can't answer as to why. I know local contractors, um, were aware of it. They picked up plans and I understand that, uh, there's some local subs that potentially will be working with the, the low bidder, Kenny Construction, so.
Okay, so there is that. I have one, um, just one follow-up question. I know, um, personally, in the past, uh, my, my business has been contacted when, when the city put something up for bid, they, they've called and emailed, um, us asking for a bid and making sure we're aware of the project. Does your department do that as well?
Yes, and, um, there's, there's an Arizona statute that says anyone who asks is, uh, who asked, they're supposed to submit something in writing.
Okay.
For, for us to do that and where, where we will then, for the next year, provide notice of anything that we bid.
Okay, so a contractor or sub needs to write the city and then all the departments will follow, or each department specifically?
Well, that might be something that we get Carl's opinion on, but, um, typically we, the more people that know about it for us, and we always put it on the website and, and, um, the more people that know about it for the city, it's better. It's better for the contractors that we get, so.
It is, absolutely. And like I said, we want to keep that money local. So Carl, can you give me an answer on, so that when I am approached, I can, I can let contractors know they need to submit a letter?
I, 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 I think we could probably have just a general list, which I don't believe we do, but with the understanding that you're going to have a wide variety of projects that may not be applicable, but yeah, there's nothing to say you can't have a general list that anybody can submit to.
And then will they receive it by email or they'll receive a phone call, or both?
Uh, I don't. Probably the preference would be email.
Yeah, I would suspect, yeah. I think it says email in the, or some kind of notice, but I don't remember off the top of my head, but.
Very good. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I'm, I'm glad Counselor Staley pulled this one. Um, I, just as a matter of information, the, one of the owners of Trisuns Engineering actually does live here in the Camelback area, so he's been here for a couple of years, but his contractor's license is still based out of Havasu. So, um, what I wanted to ask Greg about was what kind of guarantee do we have that contractors follow through for one? Um, even to the point where their subs, and for example, uh, our company has been a sub on different job sites, especially out-of-town contractors and where we have not been paid. So how does that apply? Is there any kind of safeguard where, because they're, they're probably going to use local contractors, local subs.
Yes.
How do we guarantee that those local subs get their monies paid too?
So we.
Is there any safeguard?
We obtain a payment bond and, as well as a performance bond.
Okay.
And it's, it's 100% of the contract amount.
Okay.
And, um, the bonding company will typically not relinquish those bonds until they've contacted the city and the city tells them the project is done.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, as everybody knows, you know, that has, has this information and is aware of that, so.
And that's, that's, that's Arizona law.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say in Title 34, there's actually a procedure for sub consultants that have not been paid to follow.
Yes, and, and typically at the end of every contract, we ask for a, uh, before we issue final payment to the contractor, we ask them to certify to us.
Okay.
Now, we don't necessarily go and call every subcontractor. We may not even know who the, all the subcontractors are, but they, the, the general contractor certifies to the city that they've paid all their subs.
Great.
And all their suppliers.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
I have one more question. One more question for City Attorney Cooper, um, and perhaps Manager Foggan. Does the City of Kingman have a centralized bidders list that we maintain? And is that, and on, I mean, if, if they're registering, how are they registering by? I know that there's something called, um, National Institute of Governmental Purchasing and they have commodity codes and as a vendor, you can register yourself with every single one of those commodity codes that you want to receive notifications if there's a bid or a procurement that goes out under that code.
And I don't exactly know what program we're using, but there is a registry that, um, people can sign up for and basically in that tell if there's a bid related to this, then they get notified. So I don't remember what program we're using, but there is, that is offered as part of what we, that, as a registry for anybody who's interested in doing work with the city.
Got it. Um, I know that over in Nevada, in Las Vegas, for instance, they have something called NGEMS and that's an acronym. I, I can't tell you what exactly it stands for, but it's a centralized bidder registration system. You register in one spot and it's for the city, the county, like 16 to 18 agencies that use that centralized bidding list. So if we could get to a place like that, that would be excellent.
I know we're not doing that, but it's a good idea.
I'm smelling the work session, so, uh, thanks.
And Mayor, could I just toss in my two cents on one thing? I know there's a lot of questions that are sometimes, sorry, I didn't recu, wait for recognition, um, about local preferences and why aren't we hiring, we can't do a local preference on these type of, uh, projects. They are unconstitutional, even though there is a statute that talks about the local preference. Uh, they, it has been ruled, uh, inapplicable.
I think that you, you can do a local preference, but you have to do a disparity study first and you have to show that there's some sort of a disparity for whoever you want to give a preference to. Is that correct? And then you also be careful because if a bidder that's from here wants to do business or they bid on a, a project in the city that has a reciprocal preference policy, they can actually get dinged for whatever the preference is locally.
There's a very convoluted process that you could try and work through that system that, uh, doesn't necessarily, uh, yes, I was absolute and should have been more careful. Yeah, there's a process that probably doesn't necessarily save you any time and effort, but it, it exists, but yes, that's possible, but in effect, it's.
I think the disparity study has to be done, not only.
Department reports would actually have to be listed for them to.
Okay. Announcements by Mayor, council members, city manager. City Manager Foggan, would you begin?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a number of them, so bear with me. The first is my every-other-week report on the census. Of course, as we get closer and closer to Census Day, which is April 1st, more and more things are being done with census, and we recently participated in the elder care event out at the new hospital, which was a lot of fun. Spent some time out there teaching people about the census and got a lot of great support and recognition for the need for census, so that was a good event. Our coloring essay and video contest is wrapping up with the schools, and looking forward to seeing what the kids come up with there. That's, this ends this week, I believe, and so we'll be judging those and having award winners come and join us for recognition here at the council meeting. And we are also being invited, I know the mayor's been invited, I've been invited to speak on the radio with regards to census coming up, so we're going to cover the airwaves there. We're also working on a sign program now that will basically sign the community, reminding them to participate in the census as well, so we're developing a messaging for this, for that. So, we are very actively involved in getting the message out, that people need to participate in the census. The next item I have is that in visiting with the mayor, we're going to recommend a change to the council agenda and how we're doing work sessions. So, we're actually going to take and change the council meeting to 5:00, starting our, our next council meeting, and we're going to do kind of, we're not doing away with work sessions, but we're going to cover work session items in the department report section of the agenda. The feeling is that we are underutilizing the, that section of the agenda, and that's a place that we're going to look to highlight and do work sessions and highlight additional things that the city is doing, because we are extremely busy. And so, we're going to take that opportunity, so starting on our next council meeting, it will be a council meeting starting at 5:00. And so, hopefully, that's clear. 5:00.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, yes. And again, looking for the department report section of the agenda for those work session items. The next thing that I have is I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that enjoy this short meeting, because we've had a number of things that we've been working on, and those are coming due and will be reported on at our next council meeting. This is just a couple of those items that we'll be looking to cover. So, the legislature, as I think everybody knows, is up and active and running, and we're going to have a report on kind of what we're seeing, a legislation that affects the city. So, we'll have a, a report on that. We had our citizen survey results come in. We'll be reporting on citizen survey at the next council meeting. And then ADOT has their, they've requested a few minutes to give the West Kingman TI update, so I believe it will be Todd from ADOT will be presenting next meeting. So, just a little, a few of the things that we'll have at the next council meeting, so just a highlight there. And just as a reminder, you should have seen an email reminding you about the strategic planning meeting retreat that we have for the council. We'll start at 1:00. That'll be at the new hospital on Santa Rosa in their conference room. So, that'll be a six-hour session with Eric Bailey, so.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, yes.
One to seven.
One to seven. And yes, we'll have dinner for you, so, thank you.
We're ready. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Watkins? Counselor Wade? Counsel Staley? Nothing.
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, well, I have just a few things to mention. First of all, speaking of legislation, I have put on for each counselor a copy of the letter of support that we sent in today, supporting House Bill 2705 concerning vacant and abandoned buildings. This is something we have discussed in our legislative priorities, and so this, this is the bill, and so we went ahead and gave, on behalf of the city, our support to this legislation, and we're hoping that will be included in a positive direction at our, that report that Manager Foggan is talking about. In addition, just mentioned that we do have a ribbon cutting next week for the Sunbelt Park, which will be on the 11th at 2:00. Is that correct? 11 at 2:00, so if you can put that on your calendar, that would be wonderful. And some of us will be going down on the 13th, which, next week, to like Havasu, to attend the State of the State address that Governor Ducey will be there and giving us information on the State of the State, which, as we all know, based on what he's already been saying, it's a, it has been very positive State of the State. But we will be there to, to listen specifically as he tells us about it. I think, I think that is all I had tonight, so I will move on to council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Oh, okay, Counselor Staley.
Yes. I'd like to ask if we could build on ADOT's presentation about that, where we're at. Two things, I'd like just a brief update on where the state is with I-11, the progress of I-11. I constantly see people saying that I-11 is not coming through Kingman, and it's not going to happen. I'd just like to sort of publicly talk about what I-11 is, where the state is, that kind of thing. And then also, if briefly, we could see where all three interchanges will go. I get a lot of questions about the new interchange that's going to bypass the exit downtown, or give an option to not have to get off onto Andy Devine, the one that will be right before that, that new exit. A lot of questions where that's going to go, and, and so if we could just see that, I think it'd be really helpful.
Not to respond, because I'm not supposed to, but that's what, that's what Todd will be covering.
Okay, good. I missed that part. And then my other request for a work session, I briefly ran into a board member of the Kingman Youth Soccer League, and they have been approached by a group that puts on, they, they put on soccer tournaments all over the state, and they do, they did offer some funding to help us with our park here. And so, I'd like to have somebody get together with the, with the youth soccer people, and then if we could have a presentation from the group that puts on those tournaments, what they do and, and how they'd like to partner with the city, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay. That concludes our agenda, and so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.